Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, June 6th, school committee meeting, school committee meeting to order here at the Coleman School. First, anyone on the agenda is public comments. Rachel Horak, would you like to make a public comment? Come on up. Thank you. Is that microphone close enough?
Yeah, I need to pick her up.
Okay, as long as it picks her. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Horak. I have a kindergartner and I have two upcoming kindergarteners for next year. And I came to make a couple of public comments about homework policy. I know it's on the agenda today for the second reading. My scholarship and expertise is in the science of learning and biology and what makes students well-prepared for college, specifically in the sciences. And so I just came today to encourage the committee and the council to consider the latest science of how students learn and what things are important for helping students' achievement. So lots of the new science on how people learn includes a lot of the homework policies in other school districts where you encourage rote memorization and redoing things that you did in the classroom the previous day. They're not good in helping students learn and helping students be successful in college and helping them prepare. But instead, doing things like reading, getting those reading comprehension skills really do make a difference. I'll cite one example from my own field. So I really help prepare college teachers. And so one new study suggested that the things that make freshman biology and freshman chemistry and physics students achieve the best are the students that have the highest achievement in the SAT verbal scores, not science GPA in high school, not science, not math scores for SAT verbal scores and reading. So I'd just like to committee to consider the evidence that reading skills are super essential to college student's success and to really look at the newest evidence in how people learn. That's all.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody virtually that would like to have a public comment?
One second. Sorry.
It's okay.
There are no virtual attendees.
No virtual attendees. Okay, no one?
No one.
We used to be such a better draw. What happened?
Before we go into routine matters, I just want to mention that Mr. Lynch will not be in attendance tonight and Ms. Saros is running late. So just informational. Moving into routine matters, approval of open session from May 23rd, 2022. Are there any amendments? None. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Move.
A motion by Mr. Devon. Second by Ms. Cobblemay. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving into communications accommodations.
Thank you, Chairperson Heager. I'm going to begin this evening in recognizing somebody who is leaving us at the end of this year, at the end of the month, but who has been in Braintree since 2011. Joining us virtually is our special education director, Jeff Rubin. As many of you know, Jeff came here in 2011 as a retiree from the Milton Public School System. And since he's arrived, he's done anything but act like a retiree. Jeff has worked tirelessly to build up the special education programs and Braintree over his tenure here. If you compare our services from a special ed perspective with other communities, you can just immediately see the impact that he has had. He has had. Jeff has always focused on the best interest of students and children. And the programs that he's built and the special education department he's constructed reflect that philosophy. You know, talking to a couple of people who have worked with Jeff in his time here, one person said he was the only interim I've ever met who truly cared. And just to put it in some context, Jeff has been retired and working for Braintree longer than I have been here working, period. Jeff's knowledge is unbelievable when it comes to special education law. He handles our most difficult cases, always with an eye for what is best for the students, always with open conversations with district personnel about what we need to do to support our students within the school system. And again, just to quote one other person who had something nice to say about Jeff, he used "The best thing that's ever happened to Braintree Special Education." So typically, if Jeff was sitting here, we'd be handing him an apple and a citation from the mayor, which we'll be putting in the mail to you, Jeff, since you're not here physically. But on behalf of the mayor, I'll just read the citation. "Town of Braintree honors and celebrates Jeffrey Rubin in recognition of your retirement from the Braintree Public School System. Being known that the town of Braintree hereby extends its congratulations and appreciation for your 11 years of services as Director of Special Education and over 45 years as an educator." And again, this is on behalf of the mayor and the town. So it would not be fair if Jeff left without us being able to express our gratitude and to say goodbye. And so I, on a personal level, Jeff, have appreciated every moment of working with you. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Any comments from the committee?
Thank you, Jeff. You know, the amount of work and the good work that you've done, you know, I personally have been able to see it firsthand in so many different ways and students. And, you know, Project Prove is excellent, Launch Program is excellent. And, you know, I always tell people the reason our school system is so great is because we have the greatest programs from special ed to AP and everything in between. And you're a reason, you're a big reason for that. And thank you for all that you've done for us and for our students over the years.
Thank you, Mick Horace. Any other comments? I also had a chance to work with Jeff, Mr. Rubin, as the liaison to CPAC. So I think it was 2016 to 2019, we had the opportunity, along with administration, to meet on a monthly basis with the CPAC board, just to talk about anything that was on their minds. And he was always very receptive. And the Launch Program was a huge program that was just launched in the last few years. That was something that they brought, the transition of when the kids that graduated from high school, who didn't want to continue to go back to high school, you know, until they, until they aged out of the program at 22. So it gave them an opportunity to go into another program that I think is at 90 pond?
74, yeah.
74 pond. So that was, again, working with CPAC and just having the opportunity to work with you in that capacity. I could see how much you cared. And the fact that you retired from Milton and you've been here for 10 years. And, you know, I think Braintree Special Education Programs are second to none. And I think a huge part of that is because of your work. So thank you so much on behalf of the committee and the students of Braintree and CPAC. Thank you so much for all you've done for the town of Braintree.
Can I say something just for?
Absolutely.
You know, I'd like to say that I came to Braintree hired by Peter Kersberg as an interim, as everyone knows, for, it was a 10-month internship. Well, it was an internship, but it was an interim director. I stayed for 10 years. You know, I've loved working in Braintree. That's the reason. The people are great. The school committee's been great. I worked with four superintendents, actually, during that period and many principals. We don't have much turnover. In principalship, it's been because people love what they do. And we can do anything if we, we've always worked well together. And when you work well with people, you can really do anything. And that's the key I have found. So again, I've loved working in Braintree. I promote it everywhere I go with anyone that wants to listen. And, you know, it's been a pleasure. And everyone has just been fabulous. And that's why I stayed for 11 years, basically, because it's been, it's been easy and it's gratifying work. It's hard work. You have to make a lot of leadership decisions. We tried to start new programs. But I think, as Lisa says, you know, we spent those years at CPAC. And we do well with parents. And not every district can say that. So I hope we've always made great decisions for parents and their kids. And that's what I've always been all about. So thanks. I'm gonna start crying here in a minute.
You'll be greatly missed.
I've been doing this 45 years. It's about time.
Yeah, maybe this time you'll retire.
Yeah, really.
Any big plans for retirement?
Well, well, you know, just I got four grandkids now. You know, I got this place in Vermont, you know, so we've been, you know, taking our time.
Enjoying.
But it's been great. And, you know, I've worked there all these years because it's been so great. And the principals, I can't say, I don't want to keep going on. I've got a lot to talk about tonight. But both mayors, all four superintendents, it's a lot of superintendents in 10 years. Noreen Devlin, I just want to mention that name.
Yes.
That's one of the main reasons why any sped director will be successful there. And I'm leaving it. Petra, you approved Petra Platt a few weeks or months ago. She's fabulous. And I feel great. I said this to Jim, just handing it off to her. She'll take it to the next level, believe me. So you're in good hands. I love what the mayor's doing. The schools, it's just changed a lot. 10 years, 11 years goes fast. So that's all. I could keep going, but you guys got more to do. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next commendation, just to bring to the attention of the school committee, we have two teachers who are being honored tomorrow by the Norfolk County Teachers Association. One is Teacher Ahila Mitchell from Ross, also a proud parent of Jack Mitchell, who sat on the committee until he just graduated on Saturday. And the other individual being recognized by the Norfolk County Teachers Association is Tommy Mahar, who has been at Braintree High School, I think, since they started building it.
That's the truth.
I'm not lying. And Tommy just continues to be an outstanding, not only employee for us in terms of the work he does, but also an ambassador for us in terms of his relationships with people among the community. And, you know, Tommy's a special person. So two very nice recognitions for two excellent staff members. So I just call your attention to that. The next piece, we have Sam Sarantakis here this evening. Sam was the advisor to the yearbook this year. And I believe she has a presentation to make.
Excellent. Hope you don't mind. I may step into your middle circle here.
You can run on it.
But the Braintree High School yearbook, finished our yearbook just in time. We're working on the supplement now for graduation photos and prom. So we're putting all that together. But we're here actually to present to the chairperson and Jim Lee a copy of the yearbook for the throwback. This is actually, I'm also on behalf of Susan Smith, the media center.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Alexander Arger, the editor of the yearbook as well. I hope you enjoy.
What are the big challenges to get it together this year?
There were quite a few. Hunting down kids for pictures, trying to figure out senior quotes, adventures. And then obviously getting the pictures in there where kids are seen multiple times. That's very important to us. So we try to make sure we get representation.
And the theme this year?
Theme this year was, the kids picked it. They designed it. And ultimately, they kind of wanted sort of a last act, last hurrah, closing it out. And so they decided to go with sort of like that Hollywood, to wrap up their year.
Excellent. All right, we have to ask this, what page is the school committee on?
It'll be a quiz, so I didn't ask that. What is it there? Usually that comes towards the end after all the students.
Lots of photo shopping.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sam, thank you very much.
So much.
Tell the kids as well.
I'm quitting.
You too.
Thanks, Jeff.
And so you might peruse that. A couple of other pieces. Scholarship night was last Tuesday evening. They had modified the presentation style this year. And in front of each of you is the book that was distributed that evening, which really goes into some detail about what the actual scholarship was all about. Over the course of the evening, I believe, but most of us were at town council, but over the course of the evening, the scholarship committee distributed over $207,000 worth of scholarships to our seniors. So, you know, on behalf of the school district, a well-deserved thank you to the community for supporting our students in terms of their next endeavors. That number has climbed year over year. And then a number of scholarships being given has been just impressive and growing again almost annually. So for Anthony Graffalo and his department in terms of guidance, the work that they put into making sure that this evening goes off without a hitch, I expressed my appreciation. And then, you know, next year, we'll look forward to an even bigger and better presentation. I don't know if anybody had any questions about scholarship night.
No, I did sit here with the format, the new format went over well. And again, just to reiterate what you said, just to thank all the organizations. And a lot of the scholarships that go out are in memory of someone, you know, a loss or, so again, just appreciate all the support and everyone who came forward to donate. I think there were 207 or eight children also who were.
Approximately. As you know, in the past, almost every single scholarship came with some speaking that was attached to it. And the ceremony in certain years went beyond three hours. And, you know, given the time of year and given the size of the crowd, the only place we can really hold it is the Braintree High School Gymnasium. And you catch about a 90-degree day in early June in the Braintree High School Gymnasium, it gets a little toasty in there. So this year, because of the way that they did it, they did it in terms of the booklet that you have before you. Mr. Graffalo and Dr. Scully acted as emcees. And they distributed the scholarships in under an hour and a half. And then immediately after, there was a reception in the lobby with food so that the scholarship recipients could actually meet the donor and have a one-to-one conversation with them. So for a lot of reasons, I think the format did work well. I think it has been well-received. And again, kudos to Anthony Graffalo and Dr. Scully.
Hour and a half, that's miracle.
Yeah, absolutely is.
200.
Awesome. And then the next item was Saturday's graduation. You know, again, I'd be remiss if I did not express my appreciation for not only Dr. Scully, but Nancy Moynihan, who does the organization on an annual basis of getting the graduation put together. Jillian from Dr. Scully's office, who worked right by her side in terms of organizing everything that needs to be done. All three assistant principals, Nancy Moynihan, Andy Delory, Matt Riordan. And then all of our maintenance and custodian people who make the place look great right before it began. And whoever was responsible for weather this year, excellent job. Started off nice and cool. And by the time it got too warm, we were done. So I thought the whole ceremony was fantastic. I thought the kids were great. And it looked like the families were appreciative. So we're very happy about the result.
89 minutes, roughly, I think it was.
Well, if we're gonna stop picking on certain things, I already talked to Ms. Moynihan about the fact that an hour and 40 minutes is pretty long.
It was a big class, though. It was 420.
And it was worth every minute of it.
It was beautiful. It was beautiful. And for those who don't know, our superintendent quoted Beyonce and.
Phil Swift.
I believe, yes. And his speech, yes. So, yeah, so it was enlightening.
Easy one is singing. Yeah, there'll be no singing involved.
The speeches were great. It really went off without a hitch. So, yeah, thank you to everyone who put it together.
Also in your packet, from Chris Coblen, our athletic director, for those of you who have time and inclination, is the tournament schedule. Some of these dates are already upon us. But it'll be further information as our teams progress to the state tournament. So I just call your attention to that. And then the last commendation I have is one from the district and more importantly, for me personally. And that is to recognize the person sitting to my left, who has chosen not to continue in her existing role, but who has done an outstanding job as interim assistant superintendent. If the district has met with any success driven by the central office, it's probably because Courtney Miller took care of it. I could not have been happier in terms of working with Courtney. I completely appreciate her thoroughness, all that she has done for our directors, our principals, for this committee on a, you know, bimonthly basis. And I will miss her in terms of the guidance that she's provided me over the course of time. So unlike Jeff, I do have an apple to bite. Although it's not as fancy as the mayor's, a small commendation, thank you for all you've done.
Well, thank you so much. Because that was not in my packet. It wasn't on the address, all right?
Yeah.
That was awesome. So it's been great working with you in this role, in this capacity. And we're excited that you're going back to be the director of mathematics. So you're not going far. Correct. I appreciate that. And we will welcome Nora when she comes on July 1st. And I'm sure there'll be some transition period and some handing over the torch, but, you know.
Yeah, a lot of that work has already begun. Nora's been to the district several times and it will continue. But.
Absolutely.
Twenty did a great job.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you for this opportunity. Like everyone has said, I am not leaving the district. So I'm going back to my role as director of mathematics. And I'm excited to continue to work in this fantastic district. This was a great learning experience for me. And I feel so blessed that I really understand the inner workings of every single member of the faculty and staff. It is just tremendous what people are able to accomplish. And I now have that view. And I look forward to working at Braintree for many, many years. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Gifts to school. I'll read them all. We'll do one motion if everyone's okay with that. East State Textiles Gift to School, two checks totaling $137.50. East Middle School Gifts to Schools totaling $7,802.66. A deposit totaling $3,702.66 from Shutterfly. And the Variety Show, $3,235. Deposit totaling $4,100 from the Grade 7 Wheel Watch Field Trip. Ross Elementary School Gifts to Schools totaling $1,295.73 from Ross PTO to be used to purchase materials and supplies to enhance the students' classroom experience and school events at Ross. And Braintree High School Gift to School, $940. One deposit for Braintree High School Field Trips. Do I have a motion to accept? A motion by Mr. Devon. Second by Ms. Cobblemay. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on. Superintendent and staff, Mr. Lee.
I am immediately going to turn it right back over to Ms. Miller.
All right, thank you. We do have a slide. So the first thing we wanted to talk about tonight was all of our, an overview of all of our summer programs. So we know we just had the BHS graduation. So our seniors have left us. And the rest of our students are really winding down. I'm sure there are a lot of checkmarks that people are putting in their own planners, waiting for summer vacation. But while that is happening, a lot of other people are quickly planning and finalizing all of the plans for our great summer programs that are going to be running. So I just wanted to do a very brief overview of the programs that'll be happening this year, very similar to in years past. First, we have the Extended School Year Program. This is for all of our students who receive special education services. Specifically, this year, we have 371 students who are signed up for 25 different programs. So this is pre-K through 12. This year, it'll be running at both East Middle Schools, specifically for the students who are tacked onto the Sparks Program and integrating into some of those classes. And then also Braintree High School, which is where we traditionally run our Extended School Year. We also have additional students who are coming to BHS for related services such as speech, OT, reading support, and math support. So we're really excited to, once again, offer those Extended School Year services in person, which will be really beneficial for our students. We do have the Sparks Program running again. I know we had talked about that briefly a couple of meetings ago. We're excited that we're going to run the program out of East Middle Schools. So all of the students will be very happy to be in the air-conditioned building. We weren't able to do that move just during construction. So this will be the first time we're trying the middle school setting. So I think a lot of people are excited to see how it goes. Specifically, we have a little over 200 students enrolled in 29 different class offerings. So that's a lot of teachers and community members who are running those classes. Last summer, thanks to a grant from the Department of Ed, we were able to run an accelerated math program. And I'm excited to let the committee know that we'll be continuing that program this year. It's called the Calculus Project, which is all about taking students who are traditionally underrepresented in higher-level mathematics and bridging that gap to allow them to make it to calculus by their senior year. And so we do that with a number of different, number of different facets. One being a summer preview course, where the students are learning some of the skills that they'll be taught in September, October, November. Because the research has shown us that if students are going into their math class already previewing the material, they'll be ready to get that solid A. They'll be confident in their math abilities. And that tends to carry them throughout. So again, we're offering it to specific students who are traditionally underrepresented. And this year, as we're rolling it out as a full-blown Calculus Project program, we'll be looking at students who are rising eighth graders and rising ninth graders with the plan to extend that all the way until those rising eighth graders reach their senior year of high school. We also have an accelerated early literacy academy, which we are really hopeful that Desi is going to finally approve that grant. This would be the same program that we ran last summer. It's a one-week intensive program for students going into kindergarten, first grade, or second grade, specifically targeting the literacy skills. So any of the students who, based on data, show that they might be a little bit behind in their reading skills, they would be targeted for that one-week intensive course, which was met with tremendous, tremendous success last year. We do also have our traditional middle school summer school program, which is focusing on math and ELA. And then finally, like we've done for a number of years now, we have online high school credit recovery courses. So any student who might have failed or didn't have an opportunity to put a course in their schedule, they have the opportunity to recover those credits over the summer so that they don't have to double up next school year. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee? With the chair? Cobblemay.
Except for Sparks, are all these other summer programs by recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
With different criteria for each one.
Right.
Any other questions that come up?
Like always, these types of summer projects and extra offerings are very important so that we don't realize that academic atrophy that can happen. You know, six to eight weeks, there's boiling a few of us. But, you know, come September, had to, shall we say, do a little bit of review. It's these types of programs that help bridge that and keep it on an incline. So they're very important. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much for the hard work of all people involved.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, if I may. We also wanted to update you this evening on elementary report cards, a summary of some of the significant changes that we're hopeful to be put in place this coming fall. So I know, I think we did a very minor overview just in our last policy and education update. But for the whole committee, the work that we've done this year stemmed originally from a combination of our curriculum board, which is our K through 12 group of educators, teachers, and administrators, talking about all things education-related, coupled with some significant input from classroom teachers through our elementary subcommittee, and then also just sending out surveys to the faculty at large. And of course, most importantly, feedback from parents as well about making an overhaul to our elementary report cards. The report cards have been standards-based for many, many years in Braintree. But we have traditionally had a K through 3 version and a 4, 5 version. So one of the significant changes that we're looking at for this upcoming fall is having a consistent standard-based format for K through 4. So in the recommended changes that we're hoping to put in place in the fall, the fifth-grade report card at Liberty and Highlands would stay unchanged, just because we know that there's only one more year left. What happened with our fifth graders when they went to East is they went to a middle school model. So the grades are really based on a numerical average. Parents are receiving the information through Aspen with constant updates throughout. So fifth grade at Liberty and Highlands would not be changed for next year, knowing that eventually the following year, they would be going to South Middle School and be rolled into that middle school version. But we're proposing a consistent standard-based format for K through 4. Another significant change is the addition of media. So all of our students in K through 5, specifically at the elementary schools, have a media block. It's 30 minutes each week. So along with art, music, and PE, media is the other special that they're consistently going to. And while art, music, and PE have always been represented on the report card, media has not. So we did add that in. Content standards are now better aligned to the recent updates to the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks. So in Braintree, we do follow the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks. And different subject areas will update their frameworks on different scales of time. And a lot of them really had not been overhauled on our report card for a long time. So this was the perfect opportunity to really just represent exactly what's happening in the classroom, try to reduce some of the NAS or blanks that parents might have been seeing on their report card at home. And then finally, redefining our rating system. So if we go to the next slide, for the rating system in particular, any parents who have, anyone in K through 5, know that we have both a number rating system and also a letter rating system. And we use the numbers and letters for different reasons. So this is a change to move strictly to a 1, 2, 3 rating. And it also has the elimination of Level 4, which traditionally had been exceeding the standards. And while we are confident that we will always continue to have students exceeding standards in each of our individual grade levels, what was happening with our reporting is a disconnect between families and the classroom to say, well, wait a minute, if there are fours and my child didn't reach a four, they must be behind. They must not have gotten the equivalent of what you would consider an A in a class in middle school or high school, when that was really never true. So exceeding the standard really means that you've gone above and beyond. So, exceeding the standard really means that you've gone above and beyond the grade level standard. And that will continue to be communicated to parents through parent-teacher conferences, through emails home, and also, another notable change, through the comment system on the report card. So, we're also proposing that, that the traditional classroom teacher, so not art, music, PE, media, that's a little separate, but the traditional classroom teacher will be providing written comments on the report card so they can really tell the parent exactly what it is that they want to say, whether it's that they're exceeding in one particular area, or maybe there's a particular area of focus that the teacher wants to engage with the family, that would be in the actual comments that they're writing, rather than it be the dropdown, where you have to come up with the one rating that you think fits most of the class. So, the ratings would be one, two, three, where three is really showing that you have demonstrated mastery for that particular grade level standard.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Yep. For the, for the comments?
Yes.
They're not going to be like canned comments, it's going to be free format, they can type whatever they want, or?
For the classroom, so on the K through three, K has always been that they're typing comments. But first, second, and third grade, where we have self-contained classrooms, right? So, it's the same teacher who's teaching all the subject areas. There would be one comment box where the teacher can write whatever they need to write about the student. For art, music, PE, and media, those would continue to be dropdowns. If you think about the sheer number of students that those teachers have, it's well over 200. So, they'll be picking for those particular areas, but the classroom teacher would be writing in the comment. Then, when we get to fourth grade, it's a little different, because depending on whether you have two sections, three sections, or four sections in your school, we mainly departmentalize in fourth grade. And so, there would be a comment box for math, a comment box for ELA, for science, and for social studies, because it's usually different teachers.
Great, thank you.
And then, finally, our learning characteristics. We've always had this type of information on the report card, but especially with everything that our students have gone through, we've had numerous conversations about SEL and supporting, really, some of the behaviors that we see in the classroom. Here is a draft of the updated comments for, or the updated particular items that we'd be looking at for learning characteristics in K1 versus two through four. This is a lot of information. So, the one thing, so I don't have copies of the actual report cards with me this evening. We are still teasing through some of the Google Forms that we had received specifically from parents, from a group of parents who we had solicited for this work, and also from teachers, just trying to change some of the, it really is wordsmithing, to try to make sure that the particular content standard is understood by parents, right? Especially with somebody who isn't used to reading educational curriculum frameworks on a daily basis. But the other, the next step in the process, I would say, is solidifying some documents that really help teachers in terms of how are we going to grade students on these new report cards? And then, in the fall, a lot of great information for parents about, here's exactly where it looks like, here's how we're going to access the report card, here's why we made these shifts.
And how are you going to communicate that?
So, I would imagine that the first communication home to families would be with Parents Square messages, followed up with information through parent-teacher conferences and our back-to-school evening programs. And then, we've had conversations about how we want to be sending those report cards home to parents as well, whether we do want to go back to actually printing them and putting them in backpacks, while also sending them out through Aspen, et cetera.
As you can imagine, there is a buffer of time when the new year begins that we can get to parents in multiple different ways to make sure they understand by the time the first report card gets issued.
Am I looking at, right? Why did it change?
Right. And that's a, that's a good point to bring up as well. So, the report card that will be home, going home in June for the third trimester for elementary will be what we used for trimester one and two.
I just remember as a child, you got a letter grade, and you got effort, conduct, and that was it. So, this is open beyond.
Again, I think it represents a true collaborative effort, not only with the teachers and the administrators who are part of the curriculum board, but taking that work and then bringing it back out to the teaching staff, soliciting feedback from them, and doing the same with parents. I think this represents kind of a cohesive thought process in terms of what do we want to communicate and how. So, we do think there'll be a massive improvement, and the timing's right, as, you know, self-construction continues, and we're very close to having two, five to eight middle schools.
Devon? I think it's important that people realize the different ways we're going to deliver it to electronically through Aspen, as well as sending it home. Now, we know it's a little iffy with a first grader, we had to, you know, the dog ate it on the way home, what's that effect? But I'm wondering if it doesn't kind of circle around to those people that will do far better ones in their hands. It's that. Help them when they're actually looking at it on Aspen. So, it acts as almost a tariff for some of the parents, and the second language might be that.
I think that was one of the issues. When we talked to elementary principals, one of their big concerns was that there was a segment of their population that could not access through the technologies. And so, you know, being able to physically print them, stick them in Johnny's backpack, and then send that, that Parents Square text or brief email that is translated to say, check, you know, your child's backpack, because the report card is there, they truly believe it's going to be a more effective way of distributing the report cards than what we consider to be efficient now. So, part of it is a learning experience that principals have gone through, that we have people who can't get onto Aspen. If you only use it once or twice a year, it can be a little cumbersome. And so, again, those collaborative conversations about what do we really need to do? I mean, that was one of the items, somewhat surprising, at least to me, that came, came from them. It said, hard copies are better right now, so.
Well, maybe it will help them move tools.
Transition.
Thank you, ma'am, Jeff.
Any other questions for?
Next item in your packet, you will see for your review and/or approval, two trip requests. One is for a trip to Washington DC by South Middle Schools Grade Eight, proposed for March of 2023. And before the question comes up, I would tell you that East is planning a similar trip, but are not as far along as South is at this point. So, we will be back with that particular piece of information. The second trip, we've done this since a number of years, Lee, is the Braintree High School varsity dance team going to Universal for the national competition in Orlando, Florida. Those dates are February of 2023, sixth. So, yeah, I mean, we can see it as a first reading, we, you know, vote to approve. At your pleasure, as it relates to that, but we obviously want to get it on the agendas.
I did have the question, of course.
Of course.
By East. And there, so for South, it's, they're leaving on a Wednesday and coming back on a Saturday. And it's $985, all-inclusive, it sounds like, if 150 students sign up. So, it'd be more expensive if this lasts 40 kids per bus. How historically, before COVID, how many kids would, would historically go? Oh, Mr. Rainey.
You have a plant.
Three. Hiding in the back row.
Good to have him, Rainey.
So, in the past, we've had closer to 100 students, but it was going up every year. And with, I know a lot of people have been expressing missing it over the last two years. So, we think 150 is within reach. Even if it were a little short of that, the price doesn't go up exponentially. So, it's easy to say, even if we were close to 100, it would be still within $25 of that price. So, we felt confident with that estimate.
And they have insurance, like all the other trips, if something, the student can't go, there's some kind of?
Which we strongly encourage everyone to do that, yes.
Very good. Are there any other questions? I think this is a great trip, I mean.
Is there some type of fund that will allow students that can't afford to go to be supplemented or paid for?
So, that's part of why we came tonight, almost a year in advance, because we want to make sure that there's enough time to organize that. In the past, PTO and some very interested parents, who might be in the room, had organized efforts along two fronts. One was for a student to work to reduce their own personal cost, and the other was to reduce the overall cost. And so, we're hoping to have that same opportunity. The overall cost, once it gets distributed over 150 students, it has such a minimal impact. They were hoping to sort of repurpose that energy towards scholarships, and it would be based on financial need as opposed to any, anything else.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
We're hoping to start getting students enrolled this spring, if possible, even just planning tentatively, which is why I'm here this, this evening.
Excellent. Any other questions for everybody? Anybody have an issue with voting on this tonight? I know it's a first reading, we typically don't do first readings, but I'm all in favor for it. I mean, it's a, it's a great opportunity, Washington DC is a fun, fun city.
We should approve if no one has a problem.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, and a second by Ms. Tuffey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, enjoy, have fun, be careful, be safe. And dance. Dance, would anyone like to come up and talk about dance? You made the semifinals last year. Give us a little overview of what happened last time. Wearing your Braintree blue, I like it. All right, Stacy Locken.
And I'm Stacy Doherty, we are on the Booster Club with the Braintree High School Dance Team.
So, we went this past February, and it was a great experience for the girls. It was a great learning, but a great bonding experience. And it was the first time the varsity team has actually made it to semifinals. And this is my second daughter going through it, so I've been through it a couple of times. But it was a, it was a great experience, and just with the parents and the students, the coaches. So, it was something, we wanted to put it on the agenda early to fundraise, but to, for the parents to be able to say, this is the actual cost, this is why we're doing it. This is, and then if we need, we have the Booster Club too, and, and we fundraise to actually, if there's someone that needed help, or we have different situations that come up during the year that we're able to do that. And that's why we're just kind of looking ahead, so we know how much we can fundraise.
We have plenty of time to plan, yeah.
The other thing is, the UDA usually opens up the registration sometime around September. And so, we wanted to get ahead of the game and already know that, okay, we're going to do this. We have our summer to sort of pre-plan, and then, once UDA opens up the registration, we can get everybody clicked in, and here we go, we're off, you know, so. And then, it's just practice and work hard over the fall, the winter, and then we go in February.
I mean, it's a huge commitment from, from the team, but it's also a huge commitment from all of your parents as well, being parents of dancers. And we're very proud, obviously, of the dance team, they've, they've been amazing for years and years. So, I'm, again, I'm full support of this. Is, does anybody oppose to first-time reading? No, everyone, everyone's good, all right? Absolutely.
Sorry. Two of my college roommates were Braintree dancers, I learned how phenomenal they were. My kids danced with some of your dancers. You guys are phenomenal, I'm very impressed of what you've guys been able to accomplish, so go for it. Thank you.
Mr. Devon? Please, thank you. I don't know much about dancing, please. I have a hot time playing the radio. But I do know what I see, I've seen you practice in the library, I've seen them take place in the cafeteria, I've seen them take place anywhere there's some space. And what always impressed me is the dedication to a girl. Those freshmen came, come in, and right away, it's, this is the bar, and it's not a low bar, it's a high bar. And I think that's a testament to leadership, and the fact, there again, success begets success. So, I'm looking forward to you guys doing very well, and the creativity that you guys put forth, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Makes us all better.
Dancing, it's a year-round sport, even though it's a, you know, year-round thing. Those seniors graduated and are rising, we have juniors this year, those rising seniors are already on it. They're getting ready for triads next week, they've already choreographed their dance, I mean, they're really, and I'm, and, and we're preseason, you know.
It keeps them busy.
Keeps them busy.
And that's my whole thing, it's been, all my kids is, they're busy, they're involved in something, that's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you. It's just an extraordinary program, and it just amazes me, you know, there's certain programs in this town that just year after year after year succeed, and this, it's phenomenal that, you know, you have, no matter, no matter what year it is, you have that consistency. And it has a lot to do with the coaching as well, but these kids really put such a great effort in. And I just remember going into the Garden one time, and we were watching one of the many semifinal championships for the girls' basketball team. And dance team's on the floor, and they have like, like an aerial view on the Jumbotron, and just seeing how like amazingly in order everybody was.
Precision.
It was just, it was just incredible. So, you know, congratulations to everything that you guys have accomplished and continue to accomplish.
Thank you. Thank you, coaching staff.
Absolutely. Devon, motion?
I'll make the motion. Oh.
Ms. Saros. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Saros, and a second by Mr. Devon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, make us proud. Thank you very much. Okay, administrative updates, so the summer dates.
I only have one item under administrative updates, and those are the tentative summer school committee dates. We are looking at one on July 18th, and then the second one would be on August 22nd. Place and time to be determined, but those two dates appear to be the ones that work best.
If any of you would like to leave, there's no, there's no need for you to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. Yes, I'm sure you have plenty of things to do.
Except for Principal Rainey.
Thank you for being here, thank you. Okay, so I did communicate out the July 18th and 22nd dates, so I'm hoping they're agreeable to everybody around summer vacations. Okay, from the school committee, school committee student representative updates.
Things at the high school are dying down very slowly. We're finals, but we're getting there. Final stretch, guys. But I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. This is my second year, and I hope to have a third year on this position. It's just been so amazing, I've met some great people, some great friends, and I hope to see you next school year.
Excellent.
And just to reiterate Gia's comment, I completely agree, this was my first year on the council, and I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to come to the meetings and be a part of like the administration of our town. And also, thank you to all of you, because being, sitting here firsthand at your meetings every month, I understand that your jobs are not easy in any way. So, thank you so much for all that you do for the Braintree Public Schools, and I also look forward to hopefully working with you all again in the fall.
Excellent. So, have you applied? What is the?
Our session's open today.
Okay.
Arm was printed, and we can pick it up, and it's due next week.
Excellent.
Starting.
Okay, great, well, hope to see you both back here. Thank you, thank you for your, always thank you for your contribution. Okay, moving on, Policy and Education Subcommittee update. Ms. Tuffey, do you want to give us the overview?
Today, we are doing consideration of second reading or approval of the homework policy. This was developed by the curriculum board, by talking to teachers and surveying parents. And it adds the word guardians. It removes language requiring assignment notebooks. In K through three, timeframes are specified for both math and reading. And at the middle school level, the seventh grade or homework has been removed. So, if, would someone like to make a motion to approve this today?
I have a motion. Oh, Mr. Devon.
To the previous speaker that spoke in public comment, did we, have we got language in there that's, shall we say, asking parents to please do as much as possible? You know that you can't hear it enough, so, second, third grade, I mean, even, even higher, if you're having issues. Is that something that's?
It's in here.
It is, okay, I must have missed that.
It's the homework timeframe, it's specific to reading and to math.
Excellent. Just wanted to make sure that the, it was.
She was speaking in favor of it.
Okay, excellent, then. I missed that one. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, Ms. Cobblemayor.
Second.
Second by Ms. Saros, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you for your work on this, Policy Subcommittee.
And I would just like to say, Ms. Keager, that the next Policy and Education Subcommittee meeting will be scheduled this, after, right now, we've, we've requested an administrative review of the dress code, so.
Thank you. For finance and operations, the in-town meeting. Thank you. For finance and operations, the inter-town meeting was last Tuesday, the 31st. The town council approved unanimously the budget, FY23 annual budget. And we have yet to schedule our next finance and operations meeting. That is it for finance and operations. And then tentative consideration or approval vote for the adjustments of the FY23 budget. Majority being the fact that we need to transfer over the maintenance budget to the town based on the, the vote that we had taken at the last meeting. So, is the lady you want to fill us in?
Certainly. So up on the screen, what you will see is an adjusted listing of the budget articles. And I'm only going to focus on the ones that have an asterisk next to them because those are the ones that are changing. The other ones, there is no change to the dollar figure of the articles that you've already approved. So under curriculum and instruction, if you looked on the right where it says corrections, we, we had made a slight, oh, we had made a slight mistake in terms of sped costs. So the overall budget would be reduced by 5,000. It comes out of that line. So that line is adjusted by $5,000. If you go down to Article Six, this is the meat of it. This is where monies from the school department budget would be going back to the town for maintenance and custodian. And as you can see, again, on the top part of the right, going to the town would be $2,637,038 in custodial services from the school's budget to the towns. $913,893 from the school department's maintenance services to the town. $1,405,663 in utilities that would now go to the town. And $15,700, which is school due or assets essential that presently resides in the school department budget, that, that money for that software would also go over to the town. So from the school budget to the town would be a total of $4,972,294. You know, the other corrections that are listed below, there was a $10,000 adjustment in district-wide services. It, it goes from one line to another. It doesn't leave anywhere, but it was in the wrong place. We put it in the right place. And then $30,000, that line is increased by $30,000 because it's the consolidation of substitute monies. They were in various departments. They're all in that one line now. So again, the only changes are reflected by the Articles Four, Six, Nine, and Ten. And then obviously, the bottom line is different as it is now $68,494,774. So again, the budget that you previously approved was $73,472,068. And as you can see, close to $5 million would be going over to the town.
Are there any questions from the committee?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Tuffy.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask Mayor, what funding the town has applied for through the county, this was a, an issue previously. And so could you tell me exactly what, other than revenue replacement, what the town has applied for?
Good, Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So as of today, we had remaining balance of approximately 2.7 million for this, this year's piece of the 3.5 million. And we have applied for, in two different areas that we're allowed to apply for. One was $1,096,311, and that was for police issues that were related to amounts that we're allowed to apply for. And we also applied for 1.1,656,544.93 for school items that were available for us to apply for. So we will be at the total of the 3.5 million we were eligible for, for this year. So those two have been submitted and we just.
So can you tell me what those school items are that you've applied for?
Computer tech salaries, nurses, guidance, psychologists, and behavioralists are part of the application.
So, so this would essentially add $1 million to, if we, we receive this grant, this will add $1 million to the school budget?
What it is, is it's reimbursement for monies that we have already budgeted for or spent. Actually, these are for monies that we've already spent. So that would be reimbursement, which would give us additional funding for us to utilize as we move into additional budgets.
So essentially, then, this, this budget that we're being asked to approve today is the same as it was previously. The only difference is that we are, we've agreed to move the maintenance budget over.
Correct.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So we're not hiring those additional teachers and SEL counselors that we had hoped for at the beginning of this process. We were looking at additional school adjustment counselors, reading specialists, SEL, elementary staff, point four art, point four guidance, ELA teacher. And we're not, we're not getting back the positions, the 10 positions that we lost the preceding year.
This is the budget that you described. This is the budget that was approved on Tuesday. And it simply reflects the movement of the monies for custodial and maintenance over to the town.
Well, I will say that I did go to the town council meeting and it's quite clear that Braintree has revenue issues. However, I felt that this budget was a 0.8% increase as compared to the overall town budget, which is what, 4.4%? Much was made about the small sizes and our elementary school classes due to decreased enrollment. However, nothing was said about the elimination of programs. The, especially at the middle school and high school, we've seen some essential programs be eliminated, eliminated over the past few years. Math connections at the middle school level, math support classes at high school have been, are being eliminated next year. We've lost writing workshop in seventh grade. We've lost reading.
For media.
Reading in teachers and at high school level, this, students don't have an additional, additional lab time built into their science classes, which I, I, you know, that certainly saves money as far as teacher time. But lab time is important when you're, you need to, you need that extended period to do hands-on activities. And that's not happening. So I, I, well, I, I hope that the, the transfer of the maintenance services to the town will save money. Revenue is definitely an issue in Braintree and I, unfortunately, the schools seem to be bearing the burden more than other departments.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy. Any other comments or questions? So are we going to vote for just the articles that have changed? Or do we need to vote for all?
I would suggest that the committee take a vote on the four articles that have changed and the total.
So with that, it is Article Four. I think the numbers I have in front of me are different than the numbers you have on the board.
Numbers on the board are accurate.
Okay. So I need to read them. I can't see them.
Yeah.
A little tidbit of information.
It's just a little information. Okay. All those in favor of Article Four?
Do we have to move to accept? Do you have to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Mick, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Epstein.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So I have four yes, one, one?
Yeah.
One, one. Okay. Thank you. Article?
Article Six is listed at $60,000.
Motion to accept, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, second by Mick, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Article Nine is $5,638,385.
And that, I'm sorry, and that is for which, what category?
All of the district.
It's all of the district services. In this particular case, it's the consolidation of sub-money into that line.
Substitutes.
Substitutes.
$30,000.
It's a $30,000 difference.
Number three. That's the change. Have a motion?
So I'll move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, second by Mick, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to stand.
I am opposed.
Four, four, one and one. In favor?
Article Ten is $1,781,292.
Motion to accept, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Mick, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Was that, was that everybody? Was that yes? Sorry. I didn't hear everyone. Six. Oh, and that one passes. Six to zero.
And the, the total, adjusted total is $68,494,774.
Motion to accept, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, second by Mick, of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions?
Epstein.
I have full one and one. It passes. Thank you all very much. With that, that's to the end of our agenda. So again, our next meeting will be on July 18th, Monday, 6:30 here. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Devon?
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Saros?
Aye.
Mick, of course.
Aye.